Good evening, everyone. Time is 6:30 on June the 3rd, 2021. This special call meeting is now called to order. Roll call, all individuals or all council people are present. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Powell, will you give us an invocation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Lord, we're just grateful for a beautiful day and warm weather in summertime. And, Lord, it just feels good to be in your creation. Lord, we pray over this meeting tonight because issues that we face can be really difficult, Lord. And we just ask that you would give us wisdom, give our council wisdom, give them guidance and knowledge that they need to make hard decisions, and give them a sense of community among themselves, that they are strong friends, they live together in what is a great community, Lord. And we just ask that you would give them wisdom to share with each other their ideas and to accept arguments the way they should and to bless them, Lord, and help them to make wise decisions for the community. Lord, we have a lot of people who work for the city who make all their actions come to pass. We just ask that you would bless them and their families as they continue to work to make this a great city. And, Lord, we just ask that you'd bless the folks who are citizens here, that they would continue to encourage and thrive in all the good things that they get to enjoy because of where they live, Lord. And we're grateful for the economics and the strength and really the sense of community that is here, Lord. We just ask you to continue to bless it. Lord, most of all, we give you thanks for the wonder that you've placed here and given this place. We ask you to bless it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. First item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing. It deals with the 2021 property tax millage rate. Ms. Shermer?
Okay. Jennifer, we need some technical assistance over here, if possible, please. Sorry, no.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm sorry. The first item on the agenda for this called meeting is a public hearing on the proposed millage rate. So this is a step in the fiscal year 2122 operating budget process. All of the steps thus far in putting the operating budget together are on the screen. And as you see for the line in blue, we are now at the second mil rate public hearing. And then following this public hearing, there will be a work session of council. And then the final mil rate and budget public hearing will be on at the regular council meeting on June 15th. So there is no council action on the agenda this evening on the millage rate, just public hearing. So the mil rate, the current millage rate in Social Circle is 7.9 mils. And the recommended mil rate that the operating budget is based upon is 7.9 mils. So there is no change, no increase recommended in the millage rate. Because properties are assessed every year in Georgia, if the assessed value of existing properties increases such that the resultant taxes that are paid are greater, even if the millage rate does not change, that's considered a tax rate increase, and that is what requires these public hearings. So based on the reassessments, the city's assessments did increase approximately 6%, but the majority of that was due to new growth. The increase that's related to reassessments was 2%, less than 2%. So the rollback millage rate to eliminate that difference would have been 7.7 some mils. So the recommended millage rate that the budget that has been presented is based on is 7.9 mils. I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
No questions? Thank you, Ms. Shermer. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comment. If there's anybody here that wishes to speak in favor of this millage rate, please step forward. If there's anyone here wishing to speak in opposition of this millage rate, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Like Ms. Shermer said, there is no decision to be made tonight. This will be voted on in our June 15th regular meeting. That said, I will close the call meeting, ask for a motion to adjourn the call meeting.
So moved.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I'll now call the work session to order. First agenda item is Planning Commission Public Hearing Review of the Jubilee Subdivision.
All right, Ms. Barbara Chilagader will give an overview. This was heard by the Planning Commission at their meeting in May and will come to council at your regular meeting on June 15th.
What? Sorry. 200 apartments. 200 apartments and 30 townhomes and 142 single-family homes would be in the yellow. Okay, we had a, they're asking for a public hearing and the subdivision for parcel SC 070015A00, 58 acres. The property was zoned plan unit development in 2002. The original agreement expired in 2017. Therefore, the application is not consistent with the purpose and intent of a planned unit development. And no commercial retail mixed use has been proposed in this proposed development, simply an apartment complex and a separate townhouse development. This is a comparison of Phase 1 and application for Jubilee 2. In 2002, it was rezoned to a PUD, a planned unit development. They proposed 230 single-family homes, 200 multifamily, 30 townhomes, and there was 25,000 square feet of commercial and 25,000 square feet of office space. And that would be at the back at the Clover Drive. Existing Phase 1 has 88 homes in it. Proposed Phase 2 would be the 142 single-family homes, 200 multifamily homes, and 30 townhomes. They have removed the commercial at the back. This was the original PUD that was approved in 2002. This is a very impractical design. There was 50,000 square feet combined office and commercial use in the rear. There was no buffers or screening. There were narrow lots, and they were averaging 30 feet wide. This is the 2020 update site plan that they are proposing. And in Phase 2, they would have 142 single-family homes. There would be a buffer green space at the back of the yellow lots. The multifamily townhomes entrance would be on West High Tower. They would not come out through the Jubilee single-family homes. Phase 2's got 200 multifamily homes and 30 townhomes. The public hearing for the Jubilee. The future land use map shows all the surrounding neighborhoods are low-density, single-family residential. The PUD district for this property is spot zoning, and it authorizes incompatible uses and densities with the surrounding built environment. This is a map of the zoning, and you'll see in the purple, that's a planned unit development. And I'm sorry, that was the comprehensive future land use map there. This is the zoning map. The black with the site there shows the planned unit development. The future land use plan of the city is instructive. Surrounding area is low-density, single-family residential. Applying a PUD planned unit development or high-density residential to this property is like spot zoning. We have zoning districts for higher-density uses in our zoning. The property is not appropriate for higher-density districts. This is just considerations from our fire chief. He looked at the plans that has been presented. The subdivision ordinance requires three public road access points for 200 or more housing units. The narrow roadways for fire apparatus. Parking on the roadway is a problem in the current phase, and this would need to be addressed in Phase 2. Fire apparatus access roads shall not be construed in any manner, including parking of vehicles. The apartments being three stories would require a minimum road width of 26 feet. This is the consideration from the utility side. They do have completion of the Spearman Pond upgrades is pending. The construction contract was awarded as of March 2021. The Jubilee wet well is not deep enough to provide sufficient operating depth to avoid backing up into the sewers. A new wet well should be provided. The deeper wet well will require the use of submersible pumps. The pump station would upgrade should be submitted to the city for approval and need to require a loop line for the water mains within the development, less vulnerable to water main breaks. On the traffic update, two entrances in the same vicinity with Windsong entrance and Clover Drive. The recommendation from the public works is that would be better to have a roundabout in that area. Jubilee Phase 1 streets are very narrow and is a nightmare to navigate trucks, utility equipment when issues arise with the utility service. Parking of residential vehicles along the roadway or impossible utility trucks, trailers, and other equipment to navigate. Of course, this I cannot read up there. We are, we're conducting a housing survey. We had a professional consulting company come in and look at our housing in Social Circle. This is just a summary of our city housing assessment. The city just completed their professional housing study along with the community input to give, meaning to the logic and fair community development plan for the entire city. Orderly development in the city consisting, consistent with a plan that ensures quality while providing housing options. Apartments in similar dense residential developments, the suggested profile is to have a designated area in the downtown development overlay district to support the commercial and retail businesses. Second area is targeted for the use near the current transportation corridor near I-20. The subject track is not near either of these areas and would be a gross violation of the professional recommendation of the housing survey. These are just the closing statements. The surrounding low-density residential land use districts are supported by R-15 recommendation. The proximity to the city school location is a factor that supports the lower-density uses because of the pedestrian traffic concern for the children. The city is attractive to new residents wanting to rent here as well as live here. The demand for rental housing creates an opportunity to reduce vacant homes and creates a financial feasibility for the investment improvement of existing housing stock in Social Circle. The subdivision ordinance requires a three-step process for approval of a major subdivision. The first step is the sketch plat, then the preliminary plat, then the final plat. The applicant submitted a rezone application and a sketch plat to staff. Staff has reviewed the revised plat relative to the subdivision ordinance requirements. The submitted sketch plat appears to include all the information required for a sketch plat submission. The zoning map of the city may be amended from time to time by the mayor and council as herein specified, but no amendment shall be become effective unless it has went through the process by or shall have the first has been submitted to the planning commission. The rezoned parcel to R-15 medium-density, single-family residential district. This was the planning commission's recommendation. All voted yes. Deny. The subdivision sketch plan approval, the submitted plan or submitted plat does not meet the R-15 requirements. They all voted yes. The planning commission also recommended to amend the comprehensive plan to remove village character area designation from the 58-acre parcel and replace it with the neighborhood character area. They all voted yes. And this will come before you in June at the mayor and council meeting. Do y'all have any questions? I'll be glad to answer them.
200 apartments. Seeing how that that is a separate from the 140 houses, and it's got the 30 townhouses in there, they're under the same requirement, would have three entrances.
Yes, they would.
So that portion of it doesn't meet the, meet anything anyway?
Doesn't meet the ordinance, no, sir.
And under the 142 houses, they're using existing roads. They should have to have a separate exit for those houses also, should they not?
It would be wise, but if you look on West High Tower, there are houses that back up to that park, but there's a section right across from Windsong that does not, well, it's a little bit down further, that could have a driveway. But they're meeting the requirement by having three entrances that are already in Phase 1. But that would create a traffic issue.
Yep, that's what I was trying to get at. That was going, that's still going to create a traffic issue on, right there in front of the school.
Yes, it would.
And the next question is, those lots in Phase 2? You can tell those lots are smaller than what's in Phase 1 they proposed too. What's the size?
They said in the application that the Phase 1, they were 10 feet apart, but they are actually eight feet apart, and that's the same, they want them eight feet apart. So it's like 30 feet wide lots.
Barbara, will you back up to that slide?
Back up to that slide, because it, they don't look like they're, the lots look smaller.
Let's see if we go back to that one. Yeah.
The ones on the outside edge, but those in the middle?
Those in the middle look, they don't have alleys. That's the other issue. If you look on Phase 1, they all have an alley back there as well. The ones in the middle in the yellow do not have alleys. They're all right off the main road.
Well, that's where most of those people in there park.
Yeah, yes, true. That's why they were saying with the utility, it's hard to get the utility trucks, trash trucks, and people use their garages as storage buildings because they can't put a storage building on it because they can't meet the setbacks. So, and they can't even meet it in the Phase 1. Nobody has storage buildings. They use their garages, so the cars park on the street. Yes.
Do they propose another swimming pool back there, or is it shared access with one existing?
And that was one of the issues. They, the houses would share the front swimming pool, and the apartments and townhouses would have their own swimming pool back there in the corner at that driveway off West High Tower.
But at the same time, they done away with a lot of green space, too.
Now, if you look at that original plan, that one?
Yep, you got a park in the center.
Yes.
And then you got another one over there to the right.
Yes.
Ain't that a small park over there to the right?
That's a parking lot for that commercial back there, over on the right.
I'm talking about up there where the houses.
Oh, it's the green space right there. Yes.
And then there's another green space to the left of the?
Left of the apartments in the middle, to the left.
Yep, so there's three green spaces in their original plan, not counting what the commercial is. Actually, it could be four, because you can't hear any tail back in that talk.
Yeah, they didn't put any, but that one buffer in the middle right there, and then they've got the green. Their canopy coverage is covering more around the townhouses and apartments, and nothing really for the houses. Do we have any more questions?
Anything else for Barbara?
Who is Amber? We might, could put it on the corner by Susan, and then just speak from there. Then you don't have to hold it.
Then I still have to just hold it. Okay. Back several months ago, I came before mayor and council because our opportunity zone, state opportunity zone designation was ending December 31st of 2020. And in order to reapply for that, we had to update our urban redevelopment plan. The last urban redevelopment plan was, oh, so that's a condition of applying for the opportunity zone. So I've been working with the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission to create a new urban redevelopment plan, but in the process of doing that, we've discovered that no areas in Social Circle are eligible for the state opportunity zone, which is great for us because that means that those areas are occupied and unblighted. So no industrial areas with enough blight were able to be considered, and we confirmed that with the state opportunity zone manager. There is a program that the city can utilize. It's the county job tax credit program, and in Walton County, that is if a business creates a minimum of 15 jobs, they can claim $1,250 tax credit per job. And if it's in Newton County, because Social Circle has some businesses in Newton County, they can, that create the same, 15 jobs can claim a $2,500 tax credit per job. So in conclusion, I'll just go back and the opportunity zone designation was for if we had businesses that created a minimum of two jobs, they would get a $3,500 tax credit per job. But in the 10 years that we had that designation, there were only two businesses that took advantage of that, and that was in the first year of that designation. So there have been no businesses that have really taken advantage of that. So that's where we are with that. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Amber? Thank you, ma'am.
Works Director Robbie Groves on the sewer use ordinance local limits.
Okay, back in November, December, EPD requested that we update our local limits. And so we had turnip seed looking at them, and they came up with our local limits, and the only changes is the BODs and the total suspended solids would, they lowered those. And the reason for this is to be less discharge from the plant, and that way, they based it on 25% treatability at our plant and 10% safety factor. And that allows for new industry growth. We will have to resubmit this to EPD for approval, and so it may come back before you in July. Any questions?
Robbie, I'm glad you understand this.
It is an ordinance update, so it will ultimately need to be approved by council and incorporated into the city code as a requirement of our permit to operate the treatment plant.
Any questions? Thank you, Robbie. All right, next up, we have operating questions and follow-up.
Okay, this is, as I mentioned earlier, the, a public hearing, I'm sorry, a work session in the council's budget review process prior to the final action. So to date, the council direction that we have received through the work sessions on the recommended budget is to substitute the sidewalk in lieu of 30, the $30,000 recommended allocation for drainage in SPOLOST funds in 2122, and also to move ahead with a force main replacement that will address a current sewer issue on Spruce Street. In the meantime, we have discovered, back to Ms. Robbie again, we've discovered two emergency drainage repairs that are going to need to be undertaken, and I'll let Robbie give you a little update on those.
Okay, the first one is at the corner of Memorial and Forest. When we were doing our water main project, it was discovered that we have a drain pipe going straight out about 15 feet into the road that's collapsing. It's actually pancaking. And we got an estimate on it, and he can repair that for about $10,000. And then the second one we identified is on Sycamore and Dog And then the second one we identified is on Sycamore and Dogwood. And it goes behind JK Designs Warehouse there, where we put a, a line in, we put a sewer line across the road, a drain line, drain... And, um, he can repair that one for, it'll be about $9,500. And then that one is really ready to go because we have cavities opening up under it.
And so we bring this to council with the recommendation that we would need to retain about $20,000 of that drainage allocation in July, '21, '22, from SPOLOST to take care of these two emergencies. And then we put the balance to the Holly Street sidewalk.
Um, so what you're saying is you're gonna take $20,000 from the Holly Street?
Twenty thou... Well, we haven't estimated the Holly Street project yet. The total amount of funding that was proposed, um, in SPOLOST in the recommended budget was $30,000 for drainage. And we were going to reallocate that to the sidewalk, um, the Holly Street sidewalk, as far as the money would go. And so what we wanted to bring to your attention is these two, um, critical drainage issues have been discovered in the last month or so as we've been doing other projects. And they won't wait a year. If they collapse, we will have more damage, more expensive damage to repair. So, we wanted to bring this back to you with the recommendation that instead of taking all of the $30,000 for the Holly Street project, that we would like to fix these two problems, allocate the rest to the Holly Street project immediately. And then there is, in the recommended budget, additional sidewalk money in the following year that can go there, whatever the rest of the way ends up being for the Holly Street sidewalk.
My only question is, I'm hearing we can repair it. Uh, you know, repair to me is putting a band-aid on it. Um, how much of it needs to be, gonna be fixed good, or we gonna have to dig back?
No, it will be fixed. We will actually put new pipe. And at the, in the intersection of that road on, uh, Forest and Memorial, it actually goes out and then it kind of like, has like different inlets coming into it. But where we need to tie it back in so it would go back is right in the middle of the street.
When were these, um, problems discovered?
The one on Forest was discovered when we was doing the water line replacement. And then the other one on Sycamore, we discovered it, well, actually, it was during that time, too. And we just kept chasing it down because cavities kept opening up.
Okay.
And, and then we just, we had, we done a camera, brought a camera in and hammered it and realized that it's just terracotta and it's just given way.
So, are, as the, you know, as we continue to put new sewer lines and stuff in, is there a ch, good chance that we might discover other issues like this, or?
Definitely.
I mean, I know it's guessing game, but...
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
So, is it, is it smart to still have some money in that reserve fund for anticipated issues rather than the sidewalk project on Holly Street?
That's your call.
I, I think that's an I don't know, but how far would, um, how far does $30,000 of sidewalk repair on Holly Street take us? I mean, is that 100 feet, less than 100 feet?
I really can't answer that because we haven't done, uh, you know, a conceptual plan yet. And it would depend on whether it's just sidewalk and curb or whether we would need to put some drain pipe in. Um, the intention there was to, um, address walking on Holly, but also the drainage on Holly. So, from Spruce to Sweet Gum, um, there is, the, the drainage goes across Holly Street and then cuts through backyards and across a garden area, and then connects back with Sweet Gum. And so the sidewalk along the west, um, thinking directions, the sidewalk along that side of, the Sweet Gum side of Holly, um, between those two locations could route the, the drainage, keep the drainage adjacent to the road into the roadside ditch and reduce the impacts on the backyards. So, so if it can be done without a pipe and it's just sidewalk work, it would be less. But we really haven't estimated that length. We would need to do that.
We're talking about $30,000, and then pretty much $20,000 go into drainage repair and potentially 10 that would stay towards the Holly project?
Correct, in fiscal year '21, '22.
And then more would be for the following?
More, yeah, there's more money planned for sidewalks in the following year.
I, I can just make us, um, a comment. Concrete, a truck is about 16, $1,700 now, when it was about $800. So, and that's about seven yards, so seven yards don't go a long way.
Yeah.
So, you're looking at the amount of yards we might need. You can easily burn up $10,000 in concrete.
Oh, yeah, $10,000 is not gonna get us much.
Yeah, not with concrete.
Thirty thousand may not get you very far either.
Well, true, but that was a, you know, great start.
Perhaps we could, um, allocate a portion of that $10,000 to defining and refining the design, doing the design for the sidewalk work on Holly. So, we have, we can, um, make progress and have clarity on what the project would entail, how much it would cost, and how far it would go.
It seems like one of those items that you really can't budget because you're talking about something that's, that's unknown. So, it, it may very well be that we have to get into one of the, um, utility funds or contingency funds to draw, draw a little bit of money to do this with. We always have that reserve, although we do try to keep that at a certain level. Some, sometimes you have emergencies that come up that are, you just don't know about that you do have to take that kind of action on. Any, any other comments or questions about this item? Okay. Uh, moving on to the water pressure at Town Park.
Uh, we have Jimmy Parker here from Precision Planning. And this is a follow-up from the public hearing at the May 18th council meeting. A concern raised about, uh, water pressure at a location in Town Park. So, Jimmy Parker's a professional engineer with Precision Planning. He and his firm have done our water system modeling and designs. And he's here to, he has done some research and meetings on this, and will enlighten council.
So, I did provide a little brief summary. Is it, are y'all able to access that in your computers? If not, I do have the copies.
I'd like a copy.
I'd like a copy, too.
Thank you.
So, essentially, is this on?
Here we go.
Uh, essentially, Adele asked us to take a look at, uh, the water pressure in downtown Social Circle based on some concerns that had been expressed to council at your last meeting. We did, in fact, do the water model a couple of years ago, so we were easy, uh, it was easy to access a lot of that information. Now, what I do want to point out is when you're talking about water system pressure, uh, it's essentially based on hydraulics and elevation. Now, y'all pump water from your water plant, you fill up your water tanks, the pumps go off, and it's actually the weight of gravity, the elevation of that water that provides pressure throughout your system. When you turn on the spigot, it's directly proportional to the water that's sitting in that water tank. Uh, static pressure throughout Social Circle, and if you'll notice the map that's on your computers and, and up on the screen, uh, the orange area, sort of, uh, you see the sort of the orange blobs right down Cherokee Street. Those are the higher elevations, and y'all know that y'all live on a ridge line. Uh, Cherokee Street divides the Appalachian, Alkobe River basins. Uh, so that is the high point in the city along Cherokee Street in your higher elevations. Uh, in higher elevations, you're gonna naturally see lower pressures. Uh, in the summary that I provided, um, you know, we did point out that your tanks have an effective overflow elevation of 982 feet mean sea level. Uh, so you can basically, to determine static pressure at any point in your system, you can simply connect a gauge, uh, to the meter or to a fire hydrant. Or you can take the elevation of that point, you subtract that elevation from 982, that's the elevation of your tanks. The conversion factor, you can see, I, I gave you a little formula here, divide by 2.31, and that is your pressure. Uh, that's actually the force of gravity and the weight of a column of water. So, uh, that's not changing, that is physics. Uh, in Social Circle, uh, the elevations along Cherokee range roughly from 900 feet north of the city to 870 in the southern end. Uh, so assuming, uh, you know, those average elevations, uh, the entire downtown of Social Circle is gonna have an average static pressure somewhere around 40 to 45 PSI, just based on general variances in pressure. I believe, uh, we did go out and meet Robbie Groves and I with the property owner at Town Park, and a couple of his neighbors were there. We did observe the water flow in their home, and it looked like 40 PSI. Uh, visually, your city staff had verified that it ranges from 40 to 42 PSI at the meter. Uh, some of these homes do have pressure-reducing valves, that's actually plumbing code, in your house. And, uh, you know, as you get comments from citizens in that regard, I would have their plumbers check those to make sure they're fully open. Uh, if those are restricting flow, you can take somewhat low to moderate pressure, 40 to 50 PSI, and reduce that by, uh, a simple, um, plumbing control device. So, uh, we did point that out, uh, to the gentleman who was at the meeting. Uh, I'm sure he will have his plumber investigate that as well.
Hey, I'm making a call here to ask a question. I'm John Williams from Holly and Town Park. I was the first resident, and we questioned this very same time. And the answer was, the city supplied plenty of pressure, but each house has a regulator, because we have plastic pipe. And that plastic pipe will not stand 60 pounds of line pressure. Every house is regulated down to like 30 PSI. It's not even enough pressure to run a guard mode. So, we can't have our pressure in our homes, so everybody has a pressure warning.
Yes, and, I mean, pressure-reducing valves are plumbing code. They're gonna be in every home that's built, but they can be adjusted. Uh, basically, you could open them all the way up and, and be able to get your full 40 PSI. The situation in Town Park is, the elevation of that ground isn't changing, and the elevation of your tanks isn't changing. So, the pressure in Town Park is gonna always range, uh, Mr., was it Mr. Goodrow? So, Mr. Goodrow, we looked up, and he is at one of the higher points in the subdivision. Uh, so he will be in that 40 range. As you go back toward Carver Drive, some of those lots, and I don't even know if they've developed yet, uh, some of those are lower, and they're probably seeing, we'll see pressures in the 50 to 55 range. But, uh, basically, the entire strip of Cherokee, and even your downtown area, is in that same elevation, is gonna see those same pressures, uh, 40 to 42 PSI. As I mentioned, uh, you know, in a lot of places, uh, well, take Town Park, for example, I don't know where those residents relocated from, but I did want to point out, and I mentioned this to Adele, that I'm on the Walton County Water System. Now, they operate their system at about 80 to 90 PSI. The pressure at my house is 90 at the main. And the reason is, these larger systems, they have to operate at higher pressures to be able to move water long distances. Uh, when the city system was originally built, and I don't know all the history on that, but I suspect y'all were initially serving the small downtown area. Uh, the tank elevations were probably designed to provide 40 to 50 PSI. Uh, probably many people at that time, and I, I don't know how long the water system's been in action, but I'd say at least close to 100 years, based on what I've seen with the pipe. You know, most people back then had wells that operated normally at 30 to 45 PSI. Also, the old galvanized piping that you see in older cities, they want their systems to run lower because the, the internal plumbing couldn't accommodate higher pressure. So, you see a big variance between large county and large city systems and smaller city systems. I would say the situation in Social Circle, y'all run at low to moderate pressures, uh, 40 to 60 PSI at the lower elevations is pretty typical of a community of your size. Uh, and I won't, I'll be honest with you, I enjoy having 90 PSI at my house, especially if I'm trying to water, uh, the garden or my lawn, it makes a big difference. But, uh, the city system is not set up to do that. Now, you may ask, what could the city do to improve pressure? Uh, one, you'd have to raise all your water tanks. Uh, the other option that I know one of the residents in Town Park had mentioned, um, you could, uh, draw more water from Walton County, which operates at a higher pressure. But, didn't you reach the financial point of your, is it more economical for you to sell your own water or buy and resell water from Walton County? Well, certainly, selling your own water is, is the cheaper option for your citizens and for the city as a whole. So, uh, I would just say that right now, uh, as designed, and since its inception, uh, the Social Circle Water System is designed to operate in that 40 to 60 PSI range. Not a lot can be done to change that, other than raise all your elevated tanks. But I would be glad to answer any questions you have.
I would like to ask, Mr. Parker, I'm a resident of Town Park. And I think one of the questions that Will Woodrow was making is there is 60 empty lots in there from Newland. And those 60 empty lots will be built on as soon as Drake and Onlinelift. When we get 60 more houses in there, how much of that will affect what little water pressure some of us can already?
It won't affect you.
So, it's gonna be a cut?
You're, you're looped over the Carver Drive, and so there's plenty of flow. You also loop back through the Crossley, Bobby, remember the name of the little street just past?
Corby.
Also loop back to the Corby, so it's not gonna lower your operating pressure. Your operating pressure, you're close enough to downtown, the tanks, the 12-inch manings, but your operating pressure is gonna be stable. I don't think the additional houses will affect that. And those additional houses, I believe, are the back, forward, progress down. They're gonna be at higher pressure because they're low. And I look at the elevation, it's like, they're about 10 to 15 feet lower than the others.
And the other point he was making, which we're not having to deal with, is the increase in the rate on the water when you're not getting enough pressure as is, yet we're gonna have to pay more money? If anybody wants to address that?
Well, that, that's not a question for Mr. Parker. The, the, um, city council made an agreement, um, y'all helped me with this, probably four years ago, that we would, uh, continue a 2.5% increase in the water rates over the next few years. And that is simply to, not simply, but it is to pay for, uh, the infrastructure requirements to do things like try to increase the pressure. And we've done quite a bit of work thus far. There's still a good ways to go with that. But the increase price for that is to pay for the piping and the infrastructure that you don't see and that we don't see, you know, you, you can only go so far until you have to start working on those things. And we made a commitment several years ago that, that, that we were going to commit to infrastructure. And, uh, that, that's really the only method we have of, of accomplishing that. That's why you see that increase in there. That's why you see that increase in there. Anyone else want to comment on that?
Just a long, just a quick question. So you're saying that there's no resolution that would relate to the condition to not that much pressure, but to improve pressure, you would have to increase the elevation of your water. So that is certainly not completely accomplished as a cost issue.
What do you think, and how do you view it? You said infrastructure, and what do you repair with the money that you, the 2.5% increase? What do you repair with that? Would this water tower elevation be part of that?
I don't think that's in the design, it wasn't in the original plan. It is simply to, well, again, I use the word simply, and it's not a simple process, but that's to do so, and Ms. Sherman can probably address this as well, or Ms. Grove, she's over the utility department. We have done quite a bit of work of increasing, replacing old pipes, and most of the time increasing the size of those pipes. Theoretically, when you do that, you get more pressure, you achieve more by doing that, which is our plan that we've been working on. We're probably, I don't know if we're 50% through the infrastructure plan, the water plan that we have in place, but we are certainly getting to that point. And I think Ms. Sherman addressed in the last meeting, it's one of those things, you have to work a little bit at a time, work upstream until you get to the point where you've satisfied all the needs.
I can add a little bit, that you did talk to Mayor of the Council of Kings, most of the current works to address, lack a better term, old and outdated lines, the proved the city old 6-inch gas line lines that had corroded and reduced capacity. The projects that are going on now are more to increase water flow, fire flow in different portions. Like I said, pressure is directly related to elevation, so the bigger pipe, it's going to give you higher pressure, but it gives you less flow.
I did, excuse me, I did also just want to reinforce one of the points that Mr. Parker made, is the individual lot owner can check their pressure-reducing valve and open it, or have your plumber open it all the way, to get the maximum pressure in your house that's available to your house.
There are a number of houses, including Mr. Goodrow, that we've changed the water meter on, I know at least a couple of times, and done some different things. And it's my understanding, the pressure at the water meter may be a certain, at a certain point, maybe that's 40 or a little above, but if you go to the spigot on the back of the house, and you turn it on, and you put a pressure meter on it, it may drop five to 10 pounds of pressure. To me, that means there's something beyond the meter, it could be a kink in the waterline going into the home, it could be a pressure-reducing valve, like you're talking about, Jimmy. And I suppose a number of other things, pipe size, different things, when the builder or the developer put the house in, so. And I know that was the case with Mr. Goodrow, there was some pressure drop from the meter to the home. So hopefully, that can be resolved. And I know there are a number of the other citizens over there that, I think Mr. Goodrow, when he was here, identified 22 homes, if I'm correct, I believe that's what he said, that had low water pressure over there. And, you know, we are committing the resources over there to, you know, like Mr. Parker, to do the research on that and find out what the needs are, what the requirements are, and if there's anything we can do about that, we will accomplish that. But it's a step process, I don't think it's anything we do immediately, unless it is a problem in the home that the homeowner can help with, with pressure-reducing valves or whatever. So Jimmy, you feel if they get their plumber to look out at their pressure valves, that will give them some increased pressure? I mean, because basically, I'm getting that you're saying that we have some pressure there, enough pressure there, that they may be impelled to get more if they open up their valve?
If it's partially closed, yeah, opening that pressure-reducing valve up would provide more pressure. Some homes, it could be wide open, I don't know, you know, what the setting is at each individual home.
And that could be?
But I will say that, you know, Georgia EPD standards are that every municipal water supply system provide a normal working pressure of 35 PSI. And I think even at your highest points, at the point of delivery, the city is providing 40. So you comply with state requirements, even though on the low side, but there may be some issues. We just did a similar investigation for a house in Walton County, not on your water system, but this individual had an inside cutoff valve, partially closed inside his home, and that was restricting his pressure. So sometimes having a plumber just investigate, you know, those valves and make sure they're all open, the PRV is fully open, could provide some help.
Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Jimmy. All right, moving on, we have next item, market rate questions.
And this is, sorry, this is also following up on prior discussions, so I want to give just a little overview. Within the recommended budget, there are three elements that would affect employee pay. So the first is a cost of living adjustment, and what's included in the recommended budget is a 2.5% pay raise to every employee effective July 1st. So it's to every employee and to the pay range, and that's based on Consumer Price Index. The second element is a 2% merit increase for every eligible employee, and an employee is eligible if they have been with the city for a year and have had an evaluation that showed that, from, by their supervisor, that they were meeting or exceeding the standards of their job performance. That's also effective on July 1st. So within the recommended budget, there is 4.5% pay raise for every employee. Then in addition, we have recommended market rate adjustments. Now, whereas the cost of living and the merit are individual employee-based, the market rate adjustment is where we make sure that what we're paying for a type of job is competitive with the market for that type of job, so that the city is not paying more or less than that skill set is paid or worth in the surrounding market at the time. And as we all know, markets change. So the best example I can give is, three years ago, in 2018, the pay for police and fire for public safety, the market increased significantly, and all the folks around were increasing what they were paying for police and fire. And so the city did the same thing. The city did a market rate adjustment for just police and fire, because those positions were not being paid competitively with the market. So this third element, market rate adjustment, is where we look to see whether the positions, whether some of our positions are no longer being, their pay range is no longer competitive with what that pay range is for that position. Okay, thank you. So not every position in the city is recommended for a market rate adjustment, because every position is out of market. So there's two pieces to the market rate adjustment. We looked at, we benchmarked a study that was done by Covington, and I'll get to that on the next slide, to see what positions needed adjustments to stay competitive with market. And then we also have to think about how that affects the employees within that position. So if there's a big change, all of the employees don't end up at the, in that position, at the bottom of the range. So there's one, two, or three steps based on their seniority with the city. And that's exactly the same way we did the public safety market rate adjustments in 2018, which was very successful. So going, moving ahead now to this year's market rate adjustment recommendations. The city of Covington completed a full market rate study in 2020, and this was shared, we have periodic city manager meetings in Newton County area and in the Walton County area, so, and we share things like this with each other, so that's how I became aware of this. They were willing to share us that market rate study. It was done by the Archer Group, and the city council all got a copy of it previously, and I put a copy on Mr. Boyd's table, so you would have it. So Covington is our market, meaning equivalent position, our employees would go to Covington for more money to do the same job, just like we considered Walton County did the study we looked to be our market. That time, we consider this work by Covington to be relevant to our retention and recruitment of positions. So we took the Covington market rate study, and we matched city positions against what their recommended rates were, and I provided that. And then where the Covington rate, mark, rate for that position was different, or significantly different from the city's, what's included in the budget is a recommended increase for those positions to be competitive with market. And so in the course of these last few work sessions, there was a request to recheck some positions in the market rate study. And the way that I did the recheck was to look at the Georgia Department of Community Affairs website, it's publicly available, and everybody in the state is required, all the jurisdictions, to provide information on wages and salaries for their positions, and they reviewed that database for the positions that you have asked me to, to see whether these market rate recommendations were supported by those databases. So I haven't changed any of the market rate recommendations, I've just measured it against those other databases, within range or not. So previously, we looked at firefighter EMT, and found that our pay scales are already higher than the area around us, and higher than this market rate study, which is great. It's not a bad thing, it's a great thing. It means that the market rate adjustments that we did three years ago, and the cost of living increases we've done each year since, have kept what we pay for that position to be very competitive. So the last meeting, I was asked to take a look at police officer also, so I did, and found that same thing, that what we pay for a police officer is still already near the top of market and is above what the Covington study is recommending to pay for their police officers. So we're on the public. And then this chart is just graphically depicting that police officer review. So these dots, that the hourly rate is the scale on the left, and each of the vertical series of dots are the jurisdictions that I got off that website. So each pay range has a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum. So the blue dot is for that jurisdiction, that's the minimum they pay, the orange is the mid, and the gray is the maximum. So that kind of shows you where the midpoint of the ranges are, and so I've provided this horizontal line, dash line, at the midpoint of Social Circle's pay rate for police officer, and that, you know, the green circle shows you the minimum and the maximum. So it just kind of gives you a quick look from the scatter dots, that our police officer pay is amongst the highest, so we are still competitive for what we pay for police officers. So I was also asked to take a look at some of the administrative positions, so I have done so in the same way, and you all have copies of these charts, because they're a little easier to see, hard copy. So for customer service cashier, the proposed increase, the existing city pay range is within the green circle, as is the proposed. So that sort of shows the jump that is recommended, and also, again, from the scatter of the other dots, shows how our recommended or new pay range for that position compares, really statewide, with the other jurisdictions. And again, the actual amount is what we're pulling over from the Covington market rate study. This chart is just showing, testing whether that amount is competitive and appropriate. And I did the same thing for the personnel technician, AP clerk, difficult position to compare, but it's the benefits manager position. And of course, there's much more personnel side, benefits management, than on the... And so that's why the market has changed, benefits have gotten very complicated, and the market has changed a lot for that position. So you see on the far right, that green circle shows the, where the proposed pay range would be for that position that's in the recommended budget, and where the existing is now. Again, looking at the midpoint, shows that that position is relevant to the other. Done the same thing, municipal court clerk, and on this chart, there's very wide range for what municipal court clerk is paid, and it relates to size of community. So the lower ones to the left are the smaller communities, less than 5,000, and we're 4,900. And the communities to the right go up to 20,000, so the recommended is kind of in, the recommended that came out of that Covington study is pretty well in the mid-range, it's above the smaller communities and in the mid-range of the larger communities. And then I did the same for the planning director, zoning administrator, and that's also a difficult one. Planning directors and zoning administrators are usually for smaller, I mean, are usually different positions. It's rarely the same position unless it's a pretty small community, and we're kind of on the midpoint of that cusp between the small and the larger. So you see in the green circle the existing pay range, and then the proposed. So in conclusion, based, my recommendation is still to, that based on this review of the DCA website, that the recommendations that we've made coming out from that Covington study are pretty well proven out with the other data we compared against.
Any questions for Ms. Sherman?
So in your recommended salaries, are you taking in consideration how many years they worked for Social Circle?
Yes. Yes, so in the market rate, for example, if the new minimum of the pay range is, I'm just going to pull a number out of the air, is $5,000 more than the old minimum, the employee would automatically get moved up to the new minimum. And then they would also get one, two, or three step up from the, based on how long they have been with the city. And then they would also get the, their merit increase that all employees get. So if somebody has been with the city a long time, they're not only going up to the minimum of the new range, but they're also getting steps based on how long they've been with the city.
Now, if there's a new person that is hired, how is their salary determined?
If there's a new person that's hired and the pay range is increased, the new person goes to the bottom of the new pay range and then they don't get additional steps unless they have been one, two or more years with the city. Let me go back to that. So that does provide for recognition and keeps the spacing of the long-term employees over the short-term employees. So this, the bullets on the bottom here, if we have an employee that's been with the city for seven or more years, they would, with this market rate change, they would get moved up to the minimum of the new range plus three steps if they've been there seven or more years. And then if their current salary, and nothing would reduce anybody's salary. So that would bring them up to the, to the new pay range. And then if they're already making that, then they still would get their 2.5% COLA and their 2% merit on top of that.
So my question is, these dots confuse me a lot. Let's do, let's do numbers. On the municipal court clerk, what's her hourly, what, what position, what's that hourly pay right now?
Municipal court clerk makes between 29.719 and 45.044.
29 what?
Right, so the current pay range for the municipal court clerk is minimum of 29.719 to a maximum of 45.044.
And we're proposing?
Thirty, we're proposing a minimum of 36 to a maximum of 54.882. So the municipal court clerk would, that go to the minimum of 36 to 10. And then they would get an additional steps based on how long they've been with the city. And each step in our pay range is an additional 2%. And then they would get their 2% merit on top of that and the 2.5% cost of living.
Are any of those positions salaried or they're all hourly?
There's no proposed change in which ones are exempt and which ones are not exempt. So your, your department head positions are salaried, they're exempt. And there are a couple others that are not department heads that are exempt. So there are, there are pay rate, market rate adjustments recommended for both exempt and non-exempt. It's based on the market, not the exempt or not.
So the non-exempt are eligible for overtime?
Non-exempt are eligible for overtime, that's correct. Non-exempt get overtime at a rate of one and a half times their pay.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess my only other question is, if we bump all these pays up, what's, what's the effect of the budget on dollar amounts?
Yeah, that's, I have that. It is included, it is included already in the recommended balanced budget before you and it summarized in, which will take me just a minute to grab. The total cost of the market rate salary adjustments across all the funds, general fund, water sewer fund, and gas fund is $76,270. The total cost of the cost of living is $86,310.
Anything else for Adele on the market rate?
The only thing that I was looking at is, is on the city clerks is, I think that should be moved to a 26.
Okay.
We hadn't done anything with that for a long time.
Which one are you looking at?
Anything else on the market rate? If not, we'll move on to the Social Circle Parkway, Thurman Backus Water Main Extension.
Okay, we brought this to you tonight to see if you would want to consider this. We have a church that's wanting to build on Thurman Backus and would, is requesting city water. And they're asking, they're wanting to put in irrigation system that would be supplied by, wanting to supply.
Sprinkler assembly, the size of the church requires a sprinkler.
And so therefore, they're wanting city water as to extend it down there. So we're proposing to add the water main extension from Social Circle Parkway at Hightower along Social Circle Parkway to Thurman Backus to the church property. And the estimated cost would be 568,000. The pro would be the master planned water availability for industrial sites along the parkway. The con requires deferral of Clover Water Main Extension of 225,000 past five years and requires a deferral of North Cherokee Water Main replacement, replacement for one
What part of, what part of North Cherokee?
That is...
Yeah, the CIP includes upgrading North Cherokee from where we stopped at Heritage all the way out to the parkway in three steps, a third per year. So it would push each of the three steps back a year. So the first part would be from Heritage to Rother, I think. So that would go delay it one year. And then the next one would have done a year out, would be the year behind that and so forth. So the three pieces would be completed one year later, but they'd all be completed in four years instead of three years.
Do we have gas out?
On the parkway?
No, I'm talking about...
On Thurman Backus.
They want water, can we give them gas? And then that'll, that'll help us out in the long run.
Oh.
We do, don't, we have it down East Hightower. I'm not sure about Thurman Backus.
Well, let me ask, let me ask you this question. Water goes down Thurman Backus Road all the way to Roy Williamson's house, which is past the Standridge property, probably about another 500 to 1,000 feet past the Standridge property where their last building is. If we gonna run it to where they gonna build this church at, doesn't it make sense to go ahead and run it all the way up there and loop it?
Yes.
That isn't the goal.
You know, that's also the location, although they withdrew, we were going to build 27 homes out there. And the requirement was for that developer to put the water line in. I don't remember how much, it was about 900 feet, I think, if I recall correctly.
That was because of the subdivision.
The, the, the North Cherokee, if you defer that by one year, is that, we heard Mr. Parker say that the bigger pipe does not increase the pressure, but it does increase the flow. What impact might that have on the ladies and gentlemen that were just here from Town Park with their issue?
It doesn't, it wouldn't affect their pressure. Like I said, if the, the pressure would stay the same, if it's the flow capacity that the larger pipe gives. So it's, if you have a restricted pipe, the amount the pressure drops when you have the water turned on is less. But according to Jimmy, because we asked him to look at this, their pressure drop in Town Park is only about one PSI. So it, it's not even noticeable. So that delaying that, that pipe work on North Cherokee would not make a discernible difference in Town Park.
So if, if we took water from Walton County, as he proposed, higher elevation, higher pressure?
We already take water from Walton County and their pressure, where we take it from, ain't much better than what we got. That's why we have, that's why we have the problem up there with the dialysis center is because that, we got a pressure, pressure valve right there where we take it.
Yeah.
And it, it, I don't even think it works, does it? Because the pressures are pretty well equal right there?
It's pretty well equal.
So saying that their pressure's higher, that's not so from where we take it at.
So, so what's, what's our benefit of, of running the line on North Cherokee? Say we do defer it a year. What's, what's the overall benefit of increasing that line?
Fire flow, fire flow. And there are other areas that are further off the main line where because of the restrictions in the lines and you're getting the flow from the tank to the locations, those pressures do drop more.
The thing, the thing that I'm looking at is, is we got all those businesses up there and their fire systems are on the borderline. And we got other people that might want to build up there and we can't provide the, the pressure they need for their sprinkler system to operate.
So this will be before us in, in June to make a decision. Is there consent on this?
So if we don't do this, what, what, what is, I mean...
What does the church do if we don't run the line?
Right. I mean, do we do this later or?
Well, it's an, it's an assembly, so I'm pretty sure they gonna have to have a sprinkler system, so they gonna have to have water or they ain't gonna build.
So the sprinkler system is, is interior.
Is required.
It's the inside of the building, okay.
That's correct. It's interior and it's based on the, Ken may be able to help me out. It's based on the size of the assembly space that they're wanting to build. So if, if water is not available and they cannot sprinkle it, then they would have to submit a plan for a size that's small enough that wouldn't require a sprinkler.
The other option they would have would be, based on the assembly side, pretty much about 5,000 square feet breaks the requirement for sprinkling. And they would submit a pretty good deal. They would have the option or could do something, they could drill a large enough well if that was an option, they could put a standby tank, sprinkler system on. But when they looked at that, weighing the numbers back and forth, it's really not a
So the benefit is not only to the church, it's for?
If we want businesses on the bypass, we got to run water.
Yeah.
And that's on the end of where the, the smaller businesses is going to locate in that area right there. That's pretty much close to the transition area from the residential to the commercial before it goes to the industry.
Yeah.
I just want to just think, if that was a business asking us to spend that type of money, what would we, you know, what would we be talking about?
We'd be doing it.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying in general.
So you're saying if it wasn't a church, would that be?
If it wasn't a church, you know, because I, I want to always make sure we're doing the right thing according to who, not who it is. It's just out of right. If that was a business asking us, would we, we would, we would be running that. And the only other thing is the, the payback time, you know? Because we're going to spend that type of money and how much water they're going to actually use is going to be, take us, if it was a business, we'll know, we'll be looking at the numbers, it'll take them two, three years to pay us this back, matter back, back. But as a church, it might take longer for that. I mean, and it's, you know, it's just trying to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
That's, that's true Tyson, but you also got to look at future development out there on the parkway. You know, if we, if we get three more taps on that, you know, before you get to the church, then, you know, we've got revenue off of that as well, so.
So we need to market the people who's out there to make sure that the ones that are out there on the well don't want to come off their well while we're running pipe.
Yeah. We've been down that road.
I mean, I'm, you know what I'm saying? Because we're gonna run pipe right by their house now.
Yeah. I mean, I, that's certainly an option, I agree with that.
But also too is, is like Ty said, if we gonna do the water, we need to say, tell them, if we gonna do the water, we need you to use our gas.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
That's the, that's the trade-off, if that's what we want to do.
Yeah.
In the long run, I mean, we're, the city's a bit well, so in the long run, we, we got to figure out what's going to pay us back this money in the long run. I mean, if, if it's going to take a little here on gas and water to make our money, but at least we see the future of getting our money back as well. And like I said, if we're going to run past these people's houses with a tap and we're basically going to take it up to the church on, on the citizens' money, then we need to talk to those people we're running by to make sure that they don't want to tap in and maybe tap in at a reduced rate so we can, we can, we can pick up more money running right by their house. Just, I mean, it's just a suggestion.
And as far as the Clover Drive, it was a water main extension?
It was water main extension. And there was one house that wanted water, we were able to extend it to that house. And then the rest was continuing towards the connect, a back connection to Laurel Oaks. So that would have been a much bigger benefit for looping to Laurel Oaks than the amount of people that would get on water. But the, we were looking at this request and the industrial demand that we're seeing and thought this just might be a better short-term investment. And the other thing that, you know, there may be some additional development applications coming before you that would loop the water in the other direction from Laurel Oaks, so.
And if we do this, those, that project was going to be delayed? And if we do this, those, that project was gonna be delayed, right? Not deleted, but delayed.
Correct, correct.
Five years?
Well, Clover would be pushed out five years. The other projects would just be pushed out one year each from where they're currently scheduled, yes.
Was the ultimate goal to take water out, all the way out Clover to the city limits?
The amount that's in the CIP would only go about halfway from West High Tower to where it would connect back into Laurel Oaks. So in the long run, long, beyond our financial forecast, it would go back out to, um, West High Tower and also through to Laurel Oaks. But this two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was just about the first thirty percent of that.
I'll assume this will be on the consent agenda unless there's a desire for more discussion, at which point you can ask for it to be placed on the regular agenda, is that correct?
Um, well, if there is a consensus of council, um, we would include it in the, um, presentation on the final budget public hearing. Uh, if not, we can leave it for a separate vote for council. It's really, we're seeking your guidance.
So how do we discuss, um, with them about the gas?
You, we can, um, we can contact the church in the meantime, um, and find out whether they're, uh, willing to use, to use gas. And then that would be, I guess, something we could report back on June fifteenth.
A lot of the requirements, at least in some of our subdivisions, the ones out towards HDA, that I think we had, was it three? They have to have three devices, Steve, is that correct? Three, three gas, uh-
It's, it's not a requirement of your subdivision ordinance, but there were, um, the city had agreements with those developments where the city would run the gas if every lot within the subdivision would provide three-
Agreed to a certain number of gas appliances?
Yeah.
If they have a furnace though, they gonna use a lot of gas.
Yeah.
Only, it's gonna be like everybody else, though, only on peak times. Or hot water heater.
Okay, what's, what's the pleasure of the council on this included in the budget presentation or pull it out for another vote?
I think pull it out for another vote. I think we need to look at it. Or I do, anyway.
Yeah, instead of including it in the budget, we just vote on it outside of the budget.
And that would also give us time to discuss gas, yeah, the church.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else on, uh, on the water main extension?
But we can still gonna approve it to July fifteenth, right?
Yes, June fifteenth.
June fifteenth.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to the victim assistance program.
Chief Sadeau.
Coming for y'all. I have the last thing we have to clarify right now. All about what happens to your house when it's right there. Not that, here's the church company, you know what your next step's off, where you're extending, depending on the lighting, you know where you need clothes and stuff like that. If we say, uh, if you take one of your most challenging moments and then you're gonna, uh, I, I feel our dome, we, it's, it's fire department, we, that so many people have, we put out the fire. You know, we'll have to put out the fire, and they're supposed to stand it out beyond, or nothing to charge over, or, or what's left of a house. We say, call them three days and get your fire reported. And we leave them standing there. If that is, what I like to do is start a victim assistance program where we help these folks after. And also we help pass the emergency. Uh, and by doing that, what we do is look at some of these companies, and they're several in the area. First one I suppose is a company called one eight hundred board up, they're one, they're a national company. There's also this company that I've covered, and others, we can explain the program to people. Uh, but what this program will do is, after the fire, we hope to come out, get them off the process, and ensure that, uh, what, what comes next, we can go there. Get the house, for the night, if they need, or, 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 other companies, to, to put up with, and block any, uh, help them get their property secured, and once, put your house out, and set, and set your house. And if the front doors are off, and this, and all those, uh, direct, if a lot of people walking in, out your house, they will, they will, uh, you got them. So the program we're looking at, one eight hundred board up, victim assistance, help, help provide assistance to you for your family after a fire. Help get your property secured, help find a place, and if you start walking through the process, we recover it long-term. Uh, the company, the, the companies that we work, the companies that they work with, the insurance provider, they do not build a home, they do not build a city, they do not build a county. Uh, they work with people who make sure, they come, somebody that's insured has no insurance, so, uh, for, 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 uh, companies. A lot of departments in our area, these companies, uh, come into the road, lock their cabins, uh, uh, not, we, I think I'm five of our business, you guys, here. Most every department in that area has some kind of business. We like that, we basically do, we have a manager, we, we provide us, the insurance shows, the policy shows, the government, we leave the five, and when we block the fire, we give the five, and then we, this. These companies in our area, they can walk through it, and, 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 part of our city ordinance, you guys remember, or, part of state ordinance, part of our, part of our ordinance requires, you should, you should, uh, you can't just leave it open, and, 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 uh, but it's kinda gonna knock that people. people. That's why we like to go with it, uh, so, this, the, uh, stop, uh, stop, uh, uh, whether it's for, or, 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 you can play, or, 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 walk through, and, and, walk through the, uh.
Is there any liability to the city? None, no liability, you know, we are recommending vendors, but.
We're, we're going to go a little bit of a program, like everybody else, we just make sure they have insurance, make sure they were bonded, and we're not saying call this company. When I say, we're not calling the company, we're saying these are companies that meet our criteria, uh, for insurance, they can do this kind of work, and if you like. If they call, they call, you know.
So, it's just a service we make available to the citizens through, through advertisement?
Okay. So, I guess my question is, how do we pick the company that we're asking them to, 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 um, the, the company that we're picking, how do we pick the one we're giving?
Companies that, uh, come to us once a year in the policy I wrote for, they come to us every January, and we get on the list, uh, we do it one time a year. Uh, but 1-800-BORDA is a national company, uh, it's run mostly by career firefighters who retire. Uh, they, they, it's very well to choose, okay, and they're not supposed to fight you, uh, particularly in this area.
There would be a list of, it wouldn't be one.
The Charlotte, the Charlotte, this is important on my back, there are companies like the Serre Pro, there are, uh,
The Atlanta Fire.
Uh, they, 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 they,[942.16]